Call this school board meeting to order. Tonight, we're going to be led in the pledge by Nicole Gardner from Siegel High School, Taylor Cuneo from Oakland Middle, and Nathan Delp from Central Magnet School.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you.
We're going to have a moment of silence. Before we do that, I would just like for us to remember one student that passed away this last weekend, Ryan Loeb from Stuart's Borough, and also one former student, Wayne Jones III, who was a former student at Smyrna High School. So if we could remember them and their families. Thank you. Approval agenda?
(inaudible).
Motion by Mr. Blair, second by Mr. Tackett. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval consent agenda?
(inaudible).
Motion by Mr. Tackett, second by Ms. Blankenship. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number six, before we do visitors, Mr. Odom is going to do our recognition of our cross-country students first.
We have some students that will be participating in a swim meet a little bit later on, so we're trying to move them up the agenda so they can be here with us tonight and then also participate in the other activities. Rutherford County recognizes students who have won state championships, and we do this throughout the year for different sports and other events that are happening. With us tonight, Nicole Gardner, who is the class AAA State Cross Country Championship from Siegel High School. Is Nicole with us tonight?
She is.
Okay. And also, we have Taylor Cuneo from Oakland Middle, who was a 2012 Middle School Cross Country State Championship, and Nathan Delp from Central Magnet School, which is also 2012 Middle School Cross Country Champion. Would you come up front? I mean, you were here a few minutes ago, but do you mind coming up again to the front? We want to recognize you tonight. I want you to tell me what you were thinking when you got to about the last quarter mile or something. What was on your mind as you were looking back at the runners? Taylor, what were you thinking?
(inaudible).
(laughing) Oh, man. How about you, Nathan?
Well, I was just thinking, it's right there. You've just got to be with it.
(laughing) Well, he was. But congratulations, it's quite an honor, and you brought an honor not only to yourself but to your school and to Rutherford County as a whole. Thank you for that this evening.
(applause)
We've got several visitors with us tonight. What I'm going to do is we normally do, ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. And first one, we've got Brad Jennings. If you would, like I said, state your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Brad Jennings. I live 4011 Betty Ford Road, north part of the county. I've got a couple young men as students in our school system. I'm a concerned parent, and there's an issue I'd like to get some more information on from the board. I've got some notes here, so forgive me. About a month ago, there was an issue, I think it was at Barfield Elementary School, where some toy handguns were distributed with the assistance of a teacher, and it's getting some media attention, getting some concerns from some parents. And I think there's a lack of information that parents have, which is raising our concern. And that's why we're looking to the board to help fill that gap for us. I was looking at some published policies by the board, and I realized that Policy 4.803, the first sentence of the policy says that a teacher should not promote a religious activity unilaterally. So I think we just need some investigation on the matter. I think, besides the policy violation, I think there was a lapse of judgment by the teacher. So what I'd like the board to do, and I know we're addressing it later on in the agenda, by amending an existing policy mentioning toy guns, but I think the principal issue here is not a violation of policy, it's a lack of judgment. And that's what is my biggest concern as a parent. So what I would like to do is for the board to investigate this incident, and I've got some points I'd like some more information on from the board. First of all, was did the teacher get advance notice of what was going to happen, either by the parent or by the teacher? I understand that it happened at the end of the day, so I'm not exactly sure what information the teacher had, or if it took her by surprise. Just a fact that I think needs to be clarified. What were the contents of the gifts distributed by the student? Did the teacher inspect the contents of the bag? Was the teacher aware of the policy, the instructional policy, guiding her to not allow this to happen? And, you know, what was the rationale behind the gift giving? I've heard it was due to celebration of a religious holiday. Again, I'm not quite sure. I'm hearing one side of the story. So I feel like the information resulting from this investigation will reveal a need for additional awareness and stress the importance of adherence to policies that the Board of Education has deemed appropriate for the school system. I would appreciate results of this investigation be presented to the public at the next school board meeting on November 29th. Additionally, I'd like the board to provide their action plan on their findings and how they plan to communicate how they're going to resolve the matter or address the matter to the parents. It's a growing concern, and I think it'd just be worthwhile for the parents to understand what the board's action is going to be.
Mr. Jennings, you've got time up, if you want it up.
I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Darrell Whaley?
My name is Darrell Whaley. I'm from Milton, 4974 West Tremble Road. I graduated from Eagle High School in 1962. I've got four grandkids in the school system here in Rutherford County right now, and I have three children that graduated from Oakland High School. And I've always said that I would put Rutherford County schools up against any in the country, and I'll still say that, because they're good schools, and the teachers, and the board, and I respect you. But let's just be honest about something tonight. You know, the news media wouldn't even be here if it wasn't a Muslim involved. That's the truth. And, you know, otherwise, there would have been discipline or whatever action would have taken, and it would have been gone. So, you know, with that being said, I want to challenge you to be fair about this. I think there's some discipline that needs to be done, because there's some things that in this same aspect of some of our group is going to address just a little bit later. Like I said, I graduated from Eagle High School in 1962, and we came to school, and high school especially, I would have a shotgun or a rifle and a gun rack in the cab of my truck. And nobody ever bothered, I didn't lock my truck or anything. But it all started going downhill right after I graduated. That didn't have anything to do with it, but law has changed. They took prayer out of schools. They took God out of schools. Thomas Jefferson said, "Can the liberties of a nation be thought secure when we have removed their only firm basis, a conviction in the minds of the people that their liberties are a gift of God?" Abraham Lincoln said, "We have grown in number, wealth, and power as no other nation has ever grown, but we've forgotten God." Father, I come to you right now in the name of Jesus. I pray for these board members. I pray that they'll seek you for wisdom in handling this matter. I pray especially for Don Odom, and that you'll lead him, Father. And we thank you for this great country, and just continue to bless and lead right now. And we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Vicki Twitty?
My name is Vicki Twitty. I live at 2915 War Paint Court, that's over in Indian Hills, and I'm a grandmama. I have two grandsons that are in Rutherford County schools now. One of them is at Barfield Elementary. And I want to thank you guys, first of all, and ladies, for allowing us to speak tonight, to speak to you about our concerns. I'm here because I'm concerned about the safety of our children, just as I know all of you are, or you wouldn't be here, serving, most of you, you guys serving on the school board, you're here obviously, and you because you care, and I appreciate that. And all the parents and grandparents and everybody else thanks you for that. But I just want to say that when I learned about the incident at Barfield Elementary with the toy guns, I was appalled, because first of all, I was under the impression that our schools had a zero tolerance policy for bringing anything that looked like a weapon to school. I found out that I'm wrong. There is no zero tolerance policy. The thing that just really got me was that a child was allowed by a teacher to bring gift bags to school, which contained toy guns. I was told that the teacher didn't have time to check the bags because they were given out when the kids were being dismissed. Okay, for all of you, I think all the board members, I brought you a picture of the toy gun. You probably have already seen it, but just in case you haven't, I thought you might want to look at it. This is a picture. And for you ladies and gentlemen, I'd just like you to see, this is a picture of the toy guns that were brought in the bags and given out in the fourth grade class at Barfield. It looks real, guys. You know, used to, they made the silver chrome-looking guns that you knew it was a toy gun, but this day in time, you don't know what's real and what's not real, because the toys look real. I just completed taking a safety gun course just a few weeks ago, and with that training, I was able to shoot several different guns and look at them. I'm telling you, one of them looked exactly like this one. Exactly. So I was horrified when I saw this picture. And the fact that, now, if I'm wrong, board superintendent, you correct me, but my understanding was there were ten guns sent out in bags, that there were ten boys in the class, and ten of them received those guns. Okay. You know, I got to thinking about this, and I thought, what if one of those guns was brought out, had it been, if one of those kids had taken that gun out of the sack, the bag? What if another teacher saw that gun? I'm just telling you, if I was a teacher and I used to substitute, and I saw a kid pull out a gun like that, I'd go, my first thought is, my God, is it real or not? You know? An SRO guy, he sees it. I mean, you know, he doesn't know if it's real or not. Can you imagine the chaos that could break out on the bus? What if six of those kids were on the bus, and they pulled that gun out? I mean, you know, that bus driver, I'd sure hate to be that bus driver if that happened. I just can't imagine the chaos that could ensue in a situation like this. I have some questions that I would like the board to get back with us on, with me on, and anybody else, grandparent, parent, concerned citizen. I'd like to know, one, why did the teacher not inspect the gift bags before they were handed out? Number two, what action did the teacher and the principal take to address this issue when they were aware that guns, toy guns, had been dispersed? What action was taken? Was the child disciplined for the violation of the rules? Were the parents called and told they had broken the rules and regulations? In the Barfield handbook, I got this online, I went on and looked to see what I could find out, and I looked to see if there was any zero policy, zero tolerance policy. I couldn't find that, but I did find this. On page nine, number seven says, "Students must not bring pyrotechnics, fireworks, ammunition, dangerous weapons, replica of dangerous weapons, self-defense devices, mace, pepper spray, pepper spray, etc., must not bring these to school," highlighting replicas of dangerous weapon. I think we agree this is a replica of a dangerous weapon.
Mr. Blair, can you wrap?
I'll try to wrap it up. Bear with me. Okay, I was told, and I'll try to be as brief, but I think what I have to say has some merit. And I don't mean to go over my time limit, but if you'll be patient with me, I will try to sum this up. I was told that a student in Smyrna was disciplined for eating a slice of pizza in the cafeteria, and he made it look like a gun. He bit out pieces of the pizza to make it look like a gun. I was told this child was suspended for this action. And I was also told that disciplinary actions were taken insofar as he was made to sit in a certain place in the cafeteria by himself. Now, I don't know if that part's true, but I think the part about the pizza is true. If it's not, I will stand corrected, but I believe it is. In regard to the toy gun, clearly, the parents of this child, I was told, were made to sign a form saying they had read these regulations, and that every parent has to sign, saying, "I'm aware of this." I just want to say to you, superintendent and board, how you handle this situation will determine future outcomes of similar situations. And in closing, it is my hope that you will handle this in an appropriate manner, reflecting school policy and regulations, and render a decision that will protect our children from future violations. Our children are precious, and we are entrusted to keep them safe, and their well-being should be at the forefront of everything we do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Pete Dowdy?
Pete Dowdy, 1415 Knight Drive, Murfreesboro. I think you people may as well get sort of used to some of the stuff that we've been bringing up for the last couple of meetings, because I think the whole culture is in a process of being changed. And the problem that I see, and I know there are others that feel the same way, is that if the Muslims were not trying to alter how we do business, whether it be in school or whether it be in the city council or the county council or commissioners, they're trying to alter everything that we have all grown up with. Now, if you guys want to accept that and be politically correct, then you have to live with that, not me. I would like to refer to a couple of things here that you may want to answer, or you may want to answer later, or you just may want to discuss it amongst yourselves when you determine what you're going to do about this gun situation. As the lady before me was, were the bags checked prior to. If you go into school, when I've had to go in, you have to sign in. If you, I would think that if you bring something that is enclosed, whether it be a student or a parent or grandparent or whatever, then somebody should check the contents of that particular package. The other thing is, to me, it's not really what you point in some cases at somebody. I think it's what you say, because I've read where certain kids have pointed a chicken tender at another kid and said, "Bang." Suspended. Call the parents. I want to know if, I'd like to know if it was stated in one of the papers that the parents had been called and said this was inappropriate or whatever. If they were not called in and face-to-face and told this thing, then evidently, the school or you guys did not see it as a big deal. The, let's see, hang on a minute. See, I think what, it's not really, it is and it isn't, the fact that the kid brought a toy gun to school, okay? It's happening all over the country. I think it's the uncoordinated efforts that's in the school system from the staff that is making all this stuff bigger than it might have been before. But I think, looking at most of you, you were in grade school a long time ago, so things are a little different today. If there was a fight or something wrong, they might take you by the ear and set you in a chair by yourself or whatever. It wasn't sending you home, it wasn't calling your parents unless you became so obnoxious that they had to call the local police to take you home and talk to your parents. I just think that, I just think that when you're considering whatever rules that you're going to put into your book, sort of like, well, like the gun that the lady showed you a picture of. I have not looked it up, but my understanding is that if you're selling a toy gun, there's an orange stopper or piece or something that has to go in the barrel, should go in the barrel. Looking at that particular picture that she shared, I didn't notice anything orange sticking out of the end of that barrel of that particular gun. So I think that you guys could, should consider what's happening around the world, what's happening in this country, and what is happening in our own backyard with us being forced to accommodate other people who have come here and insist on us accommodating them, going by their rules, and a lot of people, I think, are just too politically correct to be able to look them in the face and say, "No, we don't do things that way or this way." So I think you guys, and you too, ma'am, I think you guys should look past your nose on this and not take this so lightly. Thank you very much.
Michelle Garcia?
Members of the board, good evening. My name is Michelle Garcia. I live at 422 Woodruff Court in the Ennsburg subdivision. I have two children at Barfield Elementary, a fourth grader and a kindergartner. And when I heard about the incident, actually, I just heard about it today, so I was a little surprised, being a pretty involved parent at Barfield, that I hadn't heard of this previously. But I think a lot of the points have already been made, so I won't elaborate on all of that. But I would like to ask, I don't know what the consequence was, what the outcome was in this particular incident, and what the consequence was to the student and to the parents, if there was any action taken. I have read up on the handbook. I do understand that there's a difference between the school policy and the county policy. So I'd just like to reiterate what the other folks have said, and say that I'd really like for there to be a fair treatment, consistent treatment to all students who violate this policy, that they would all have the same consideration. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Angela Griffo?
My name is Angela Griffo, and I live at 4643 Barfield Crescent Road, a half a mile outside of the dual zone for Eagleville or Riverdale. I have three children in the Rutherford County school system. I recently was forced to move my residence with no fault, of no fault of my own, and had to relocate to a new home. I could not find suitable housing inside the Eagleville area and was forced to live outside the dual zone area. My daughter continues to go to Eagleville High School. I provide her transportation to the school, when, in fact, the school bus comes right past my house every morning and picks up my nine-year-old son and takes him to Rockville Elementary School, where the shuttle bus would normally pick her up and take her to either Riverdale or Eagleville. This situation cost my family over $400 a month in expenses. I have lost my job because I'm no longer able to meet the time requirements at the place that I was at. I understand that there are 297 students that go to Riverdale High School that are going to be forced to go to Blackman because the school is overcrowded. All I ask is that if consideration is going to be given to those 297 children, which I understand by James Evans that some consideration is going to be given, that my child gets the same consideration and not be forced to go to a school that her sister was at, that she got beat in the back of the head and sent to the emergency room, and no action was taken. And the child fears going to that school and does not want to go to Riverdale High School. She would like to stay in the school that she's at. This is extremely emotional to me and is personal. I fought very hard to bring my daughter home after nine years of custody battle. I finally got her home. Now I don't know if I'm going to be able to afford to keep her. As a parent, it is my responsibility to keep my child safe. As a school district, it's the school's responsibility to help me provide that safety. As far as the toys, guns are concerned, I have had to check my son's backpack since he was in pre-K and make sure that he did not take any toys at all whatsoever to school so that he would not be suspended. It's my responsibility, and I took responsibility every day, especially through that phase where that was his favorite thing to play with. I just ask that the same responsibilities be taken by the other parents, and when they don't take that responsibility, that they be held just as much accountable as I would have been had my child violated that restriction. as I would have been had my child violated that restriction. Thank you very much for your time, and I just ask for consideration in the policy so my daughter can continue to go to the school where she's at.
Mr. Odom, would you like to address?
I think I can answer some of the questions tonight, so I prefer to do that if it's okay with you. The incident did occur on October the 30th. It was a, at Barfield Elementary. It was a clear gift bag that was distributed at the close of the day, of that day. The bag did contain a toy gun and a tabletop game for the boys in that class. The girls received a doll and children's jewelry, something like that, that's what you would see normally, Dollar Tree or something like that. When the gifts were distributed, there was no reference mentioned to a religious holiday to eat or anything like that. Teacher made no mention of that. They were actually given, as some of you said, right before they left in the afternoon, about 3:11 or something, is when they start the afternoon announcements, and that's when the teacher realized she hadn't even passed out the gifts that were gone, and so she handed them out. The distribution of gifts is, it's not uncommon sometime for a student on their birthday because parents can always invite everybody in the class to a birthday party for their child, will sometimes send a small gift or something in representation of a birthday for that child. So a gift at school is not totally out of the question. You see that more often than any good thing. As some of you said correctly, the fact that the student included a toy gun, the gift bag does not constitute a zero tolerance, either under Tennessee law or under our law. Federal law controls some of those things that would be zero tolerance, such as a gun would have to be something where it's a projectile by an explosive device, which would be a shell, you know? So it obviously doesn't meet the zero tolerance offense. So we can't make it that, I mean, it's not in statute. What I want to assure you tonight, though, let me tell you some steps that we've taken, some things that we're doing I think you need to know, because the Rutherford County Board of Education is proactive in addressing issues related to student safety. I take it as seriously, and everybody sitting up here tonight takes student safety very seriously. The staff attorney has visited, been to the school, has spoken with the teacher, with the classroom teacher, to address the application of this policy as far as it relates to the school system policy. So that, that has been done. The school has spoken with the mothers, and my understanding that the mother came to the school. And the principal and all has addressed them concerning the inappropriateness of including a toy weapon. The mother, according to the principal, did apologize for that, really didn't realize it was the issue, but, but she was called to the school for that. Another thing that we're doing as a district, we're going to address some policy. You know, the Rutherford County School policies are, if you want to see them, they're online. They are actually housed at, serviced at the Tennessee School Board Association's website. TSBA and their attorneys review all of our policies, plus we have a board attorney and a staff attorney here that reviews them too. I will be surprised, now, we're going to add toy weapons to our policy. I'll be surprised if toy weapons are in policies of school districts all over the state, simply because the TSBA didn't bring it to our attention last year when they reviewed all of our policies. So what Rutherford County does, though, very often finds itself because of the size of our district and carries over to other districts. So would not be surprised if Rutherford County passes this policy, that you don't see these policies cropping up at other places when, when that happens. So tonight, we're going to have the first reading. We do, we're two readings of policy 6.316, which describes possible violations that may lead to student suspensions. We're going to add toy weapons to our suspendable offenses. You know, and I have, I have the same concern that you did. My thought was, when I heard of this, what if the gun had been pulled out on a crowded bus or in a cafeteria or something like that? I immediately recognized, as with this board, that if our policy doesn't contain that, it needs to be in there. And that's why even before tonight, for several days, we've been looking at this policy, and that's why it's on there tonight. We had a policy committee like, meeting last week, which involved members of the board. We discussed this, and, and that additions in our policy manual. Now, what happens when it shows up in our policy manual, you receive these little books every year, which is the code of behavior and discipline, the student handbook. Then you'll find, the fact about toy guns will then appear, going to all the houses in Rutherford County, of anybody that's a student in Rutherford County. That will then begin to appear in that handbook by adding that, that particular policy. We are also, I hear you, and we had also previously thought about what was the bag examined prior to giving it out? And it was in a clear plastic bag, but it contained in a larger bag that the child brought in? I'm not sure that happened. So I'm not sure, we don't need to look at a policy that kind of says to our teachers, better take a look before you do that. Now, I don't know what impact that's going to have when kids bring wrapped Christmas presents or birthday presents or that sort of thing. So instituting that policy and consideration for that is not simple in that particular sense. I mean, things may have to change in that, that respect, and I think you would understand that. But that's something we've got to review and look and see if there's sample policies or something related to that. The staff attorney and I had that conversation this afternoon. Rutherford County Schools has, with its preschool program, has a little over 40,000 employees and about 4,500, excuse me, 40,000 students and 4,500 employees. We have the third largest English language learner population in the state of Tennessee. You have Metro Nashville, Memphis, and then you have Rutherford County. And we speak over 65 different languages. I can tell you, we find ourselves dealing with cultural issues of all types with that many languages. And we do systematic training on ethnic and cultural issues all the time. We are currently, and immediately, a day or two after this, we met with the elementary principals who had a regular scheduled meeting and discussed this with them. We'll follow up additionally, which is the policy had not all been written at that time. We have meetings next week, next week with high school, we have middle school coming up. We will, the staff attorney will be with me. We're going to address this process with all of our principals to make sure they understand the policies that's been stated and the changes in those policies that will be there, and interpretation of those policies. So we will do that. We're also going to schedule some additional training based on cultural, religious requirements and that sort of thing. Typically in the past, we have used them, we may use, you may be aware of the First Amendment Center in Nashville. We very often, these people come in and bring us what constitutionally we can, cannot do, what law requires us to do. So we will be in the process of doing some retraining, follow-up training with our administrators and all in that. So that, that's going to happen too. Basically, I guess in summary, as a school board and myself as director, we're sensitive to the safety of our students. And, and we're going to be as proactive as we possibly can addressing these issues. As you can see, it's been about two weeks, and it's now going to become policy with the second reading when we can do that. I know events generate emotional responses, but I'm going to assure you that this board and I will, are going to respond to those in a systematic process within the legal constraints that govern us. We're not going to look over this. And that's what I'd like to say this evening.
Mike, any board members, any comments? Todd.
A couple of other things that I've heard and wanted to make sure that we spoke to. A reference that there is no zero tolerance policy toward guns. Mr. Odom, you highlighted-
There is to guns, but not toy guns.
Exactly, exactly. And so we want to be specific on that. And if we could be corrected, one would stand corrected, that a Smyrna child was suspended. The Smyrna child was put into a-
Would you like me to speak to that one? I can speak to that one if you'd like. I have to be, I have to be very careful. There's a thing in the federal law called the Federal Education and Rights and Privacy Act, which governs all of your children. School systems cannot talk about, particularly by name, individual discipline matters or academics, and you want that because you don't want people talking about your child that's out there. In this particular incident that occurred in Smyrna, there was a boy who did, a young child that chewed a piece of pizza in the shape of a gun, went, went bang, 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 which created disruption in the cafeteria. But following up with that, when the adults that saw it and some of the others in their report, it came and confronted with it, the student was less than truthful that he had done that. So I'm like, I can tell you that I don't know that the, what he wound up doing was some silent lunch for a few days, how much was related to the gun and how much was related to maybe not being truthful at all. You know, I was not the principal there at that time, but, but that was dealt with, but it's not true in the media that he was treated that differently for that, and he was not suspended, as was stated once before for that.
That was the big thing I was going to point out, was that I don't think it was accurate that he was suspended, so he was not suspended. And you already raised the point that the parent was asked to come in.
Yes, what I've been told.
I, I want to thank the general public for coming and for expressing your strong feelings on this. It is appropriate and appreciated for the community to come to this public setting and for your participation to express to us that this is something you feel strongly about. I agree with you. And, but without your participation, it wouldn't come across as clearly as it has tonight. Thank you for your participation. Thank you, Mr. Odom, for your actions, and the board will continue to represent Rutherford County citizens so that we have the exemplary school system that we have. So thank you for expressing yourself this evening, and please continue to do so.
Mike, Mr. Todd.
I'd just like to say on, on behalf of our teaching staff, I'm a former teacher, many of you would know that. I've got a daughter at a teacher's school, a son at a teacher's school. We ask our teachers to do so, so very much. I do not know the name of the teacher involved here, so I can't speak to her competence or lack thereof, but I do know we ask our teachers to do more today than we've ever asked them to do. The oversight, if that be the case here, I, I hope is one that we all learn from. I do know Judy Goodwin, the principal of that school, and if there's a better principal anyplace, I don't know where that might be. I know she runs a tight school, she trains her staff, she asks them to do, she expects them to do, and they're held accountable when they don't. So all that being said, I just want to say on behalf of our teachers in general, the number of decisions that they're making on behalf of your children every day, and the times that they get it right, day after day after day, I just hope people appreciate that and recognize, we do not, I do not condone teachers doing something that is wrong, if that's the case, but I'm just, I, I just want to be clear that we are asking our teachers to do so much, and I think they get it right so many times. And if you get a chance to tell a teacher sometimes they got it right instead of when they got it wrong, I sure wish you'd do that.
This is American education, we can be good damn to do that.
Anybody else? Number seven.
Number seven. We have the new high school principal, Stuart's Creek High School with us tonight, Dr. Clark Harrell. And I believe you brought your wife Nicole with you tonight, maybe also? Do you mind stepping to the podium tonight so that everyone can see you? And you're welcome to say anything if you-
She really should be the one to say that.
She's already, she's waved you off already.
Well, when you're excited about something, you have a tendency and passionate to be, to talk a lot, so I'm going to go with brevity, but I have to say this. I want to thank you, Mr. Odom, and I want to thank the school board, because this journey with Stuart's Creek High School began a long time before you blessed me and honored me to come and be a part of it. So I want to thank you for your vision, for your leadership, and your continued help as we progress along the way. On this journey, I want to say I'm excited about being a part of it, and I've realized that with all the stakeholders, with students and parents and the community, that it will take every single one of us, including you, to be able to make it the success that it will be. So having said that, I look forward to the night that you see Stuart's Creek High School students coming to be presented with their excellence, and it will happen. And I want to say this, you know, there's some things that you base a school upon, and they are foundational and they're not changing, and that's values. And that's something that will be stressed with hires and with students. And I want to make sure that the community knows that, they deserve to know that. The other thing I'd like to share is this, you have someone that will lead, but will do it in a way that all will be involved, and decisions will be made corporately in the way they should. So as I close, I just want to say thanks again. I'm excited about conversations I've had already with students, saying that they want to be part of Stuart's Creek, and they want to be leaders in it. And sometimes we can get on a tirade of the degeneracy of the United States and education, but I want to tell you what, we have excellence in Rutherford County. I think our parents know that, we know that, and I'm excited about the students that are going to step up and lead as we talk about a beginning, how unique, how wonderful. So again, thanks for your vision for making it possible, and if I can say so in advance, thanks for our community and a county as we pull together to make Stuart's Creek outstanding and another stellar school in this county. So again, thank you. Now, at this point, it's time for action, so I'm going to regress, go seek, and hope that I can share a lot of wonderful things, action steps, to show what's happening at Stuart's Creek High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see if this girl came in, since she moved up. We'll see if she came in.
Did Nicole Gardner come in?
She did. I took her picture, made a date, did that. She did a running game for Washington.
She, she was a class AAA state cross-country champion from Cedar High School.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. At this time, we, we'd like to make a special recognition, recognition. We've got a board member, our vice chairman, Mr. Wayne Blair. It's been about three weeks ago down at the national, state convention down in Nashville. He was awarded the level five board member, which is the highest, highest level you can get as a board member. And at this time, on behalf from the school board, I believe we've got a presentation for you, and I'm going to let Mr. Odom do that.
I'm surprised. There's lots of portfolio and evidence that has to be presented before you can be considered and then the level five distinguishes. It's done by other in Nashville, not for us here. It's done by groups of people there. We'll look at all the people that petitioned for this, petitioned for this, and only a few received it. So if I might read this, presented to Wayne Arblair for outstanding achievement, Tennessee School Board Association, Board Championship Award, Masters School Board Member Level Five, Rutherford County Board of Education, Level 15, 2012. And you have the signatures of, I mean, the names of myself and the other members of the Rutherford County Board of Education. Congratulations, Mr. Blair.
I'll be brief also. Again, thank you for the recognition. Been given a lot of pats on the back, and really, as I said earlier, these types of award, Chairman Hodge, you were the first to, to receive this, and so I'm just following your lead, but you don't, you don't earn these, this type recognition by yourself. You have to have a tremendous director of school, a school board that you work well with, professional administrators and educators and staff members. So like I said before too, and I think in the media, that I get to have my name on it, but we all earned this together, and I'm grateful for your support and your help. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Chair. Any board members want to comment? Any board members wanna come in?
I'm gonna say, yes. Wayne's, Wayne's performance is outstanding, and particularly his interest in the Tennessee legislative network. He not only informs the Rutherford County School Board, but school boards throughout our entire district, the Mid Cumberland District, about legislative topics that are being debated in Nashville and how they will impact and affect the school system. His efforts there are outstanding. He's been to Washington a couple of times, carrying that word. He is a credit to our county and absolutely to our board, and it is particularly unique for us to have two level-five school board members here on our board, and I'm honored to be alongside.
Number nine, Mr. Odom.
Number nine. This is under Facilities, Siegel Middle School Baseball Gate. Mr. Tom Delbridge has requested permission to construct a new gate into the baseball field. It will be constructed of wrought iron and supported by two brick columns. A sketch is attached with the board's information and has been reviewed by the staff attorney. There are no gender equity problems. The cost for the gate will be funded through the Baseball Booster Club at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. The recommended approval in motion is to approve construction of a new baseball field gate at Siegel Middle School Sports Complex at no cost to the board.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tackett, second by Mr. Young. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes.
B, naming of Rockville Middle School Access Road. Principal Fred Barlow has requested permission to name the access road that circles Rockville Middle School Brown Circle. This will honor the Brown family for whom the property for the school was purchased. Mr. Homer Brown and his family were extremely supportive and cordial during the entire process of purchasing the property and building the school. They have contributed much to the development of Rutherford County over the years. The recommended approval in motion is to name the access road that circles Rockville Middle School Brown Circle. We have members of that family here tonight. If this is approved, you might ask them to stand or something after you deal with the motion.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Blair, second by Ms. Blankenship. Any discussion on it?
I'd just like to say that I consider them possibly the first family of Rockville. They've made such an impact on that community over the years, and I've been pleased to get to know them very well and all that they've contributed to that community, and thank them for their service to the community.
Would you, the Brown family, anybody?
Would you mind representing the Brown family?
There's several out there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Let me just add to that, those wonderful teachers I've talked about. I know there's at least two that I'm very much aware of that are educators in our school system, and a great job that they've done. I've had the opportunity to work closely with both of those young ladies, or they were young once, I guess. Yeah, that's right.
Anybody else? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. C.
C is Oakland Middle School Temporary Concession Sheds and Scoreboard. Principal Sandra Eaton has requested permission to install temporary sleds, sheds, excuse me, at the baseball and softball fields at Oakland Middle School. The sheds will be eight feet by ten feet and serve as concession stands during the ballgames and be paid for with booster club funds. They will be no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. The school will also install a scoreboard at both the baseball and softball fields. Other than the cost for connection of the scoreboards to electricity by maintenance, the booster clubs will be paying all costs with no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. Oakland Middle School will be responsible for meeting all codes and purchasing all required permits for placement of the sheds and scoreboards. There's no gender equity issue since both baseball and softball fields will receive the same item. And the motion is to approve construction of temporary buildings and scoreboards at Oakland Middle School at the baseball and softball field at no cost to the board.
I'm moved to approve. Second. Motion by Mr. Nipper, second by Ms. Blankenship. Any discussion? I would, I would just like to comment that this work and everything is done under Mr. Partick's guidance, correct? All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number ten.
Number ten is excusal from compulsory attendance. Pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated, Section forty-nine, six, three thousand five, the Board of Education may excuse students from complying with compulsory attendance laws if they are mentally or physically incapacitated to perform school duties. Duly licensed physicians must confirm the incapacitation. A copy of the physician's note for a student experiencing physical incapacitation has been provided to the director of schools. Under the board's authority, the director of schools will approve the student's excusal from compulsory attendance at this time, and the motion is to allow the director of schools the authority to excuse students who are physically or mentally incapacitated from compulsory attendance.
So moved. Second. Motion by Mr. Blair, second by Mr. Nipper. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eleven.
Number eleven is new and revised policies on first reading under tab three. The first policy is six point three one two, use of personal communication devices and cellular telephones. The purpose of this revision is to allow students to use personal technology devices for instructional purposes. I might say there's a kind of a twofold thing in this one. We're looking at revising the policy that would allow students to bring personal devices to school that's used for instructional purposes. It's called Bring Your Own Devices, happening all across the United States of America. Rutherford County doesn't wanna be one of the last, and we wanna be in the lead of this. We will be piloting and testing the use of some of these devices by installing wireless nodes within the school to incorporate this into the instructional process. You, as parents, may not realize that in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, the Common Core Exam, National Common Core Exam, is to be given online. So, the use and instructional use of online and the technology is gonna grow immensely in this. There's another piece in this that, one of the things I discovered as director of schools, that we had some differences in how we handle cell telephones, maybe when we take them up and the procedures relating to that. As I uncover these, I'll continue to bring to you things to try to bring us together so that it's consistent across all of our schools. It's policy six point three one two. And the motion, I didn't-
You wanna do the next?
Okay, and policy six point three one six is dealing with suspensions, and that is the one that, that we had said earlier, and which does include weapons, toy weapons and that sort of thing to being as a suspendable offense. Purpose of this revision, to add language to the policy allowing suspensions for possession of toy weapons on school property except for school-sponsored or approved functions. We're talking about ROTC. You're talking about the drill teams that use toy weapons there. So, there are times where it is a part of the school function or something that we have to also address when we do that. And I think, would you may have, there's been an attachment, you have a copy of possibly administrative procedure that goes with that. So, the recommended approval of the motion is to approve the revisions to policy six point three one two and six point three one six on first reading is recommended by the policy committee.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Tackett, second by Mr. Holliday. Any discussion on it?
Let me say this, this to the audience about the policy, the six point three one two. That is for certain schools right now. It's not to be opened up to every school because we do not have the wireless in place. So, I wanna let the parents know that next year, that little Johnny might get it in one school, but Bobby won't get it over here to the other school.
Mr. Nipper is active serving with our technology people on a committee that's examining this and how to, how to implement it. There is a plan, possibly the state legislature will do a special funding this year because the issue of having to test online across the state of Tennessee in fourteen fifteen is a big issue, much less a financial issue. So, what we're doing actually is piloting. We are looking at what's the best devices. Your router at home will not work and handle a class of thirty students on it at a time, much less a building of students that might be testing or doing something at the same time. So, we're testing two different devices, and we'll be testing it some over the spring so that if we do receive that state money to do that, that we can purchase the most effective and efficient one to do that. So, Mr. Nipper served on that, and we, but in order to even pilot it, we need to begin to look at policy revisions that permit that.
All right, everybody heard the motion? Motion is second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. General discussion. Number twelve.
Well, I'm gonna beat Mr. Tackett to the punch and congratulate a Rutherford County student athlete that is now considered the best pitcher in professional baseball, David Price. Maybe we can have him come and spend some time, but awfully proud to see a Rutherford County athlete reach the pinnacle. So, congratulations to him and his family. Sorry, Mr. Tackett.
That's okay. I second the motion.
I figured you'd beat me, too. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Sometimes we don't always highlight everything that's on the consent agenda, and certainly we don't highlight the minutes of the previous meeting. However, tonight is a little bit unique. There are eight meetings worth of minutes that are a part of our consent agenda. Your school board has been very busy. A lot of those are in connection with Stuart's Creek High School and the zoning and public meetings that we've had there, where, again, the public has come and participated and shared with us concerns, and we certainly appreciate that. There's more to be done on that before we make a final decision. In addition to that, though, the board had a board retreat where many of our staff came and presented insight into what they are currently working on and what their aspirations and plans are for the future. Rutherford County Schools are not content with the success that we are enjoying, as with the Bring Your Own Device policy and so many other things. We are looking toward the future, and that was really highlighted in that board retreat. We also had a tour of some of the schools, and that is also recorded as all things with the school board or public, but it was outstanding to be able to, as a board, go together and see some of the facilities and some of the infrastructure challenges that we'll face in the future. We have an upcoming, upcoming meeting where our long-range building program will be discussed, and, again, with so many of the general public here tonight, please stay informed and stay attentive to these issues that are so important to our county.
Thank you, Mr. Holliday. Anything else? Mr. Tackett? You mind at ease?
I'm minded at ease.
Well, we're done.